If it's, if it's the, you know what I mean, plans, site permits, although she would have all of those. So basically, well, it's something different than what she would have from the staff. That's the only thing. And my guess is probably based on, if it is, it would just need to be noted that this is something different that has been additional. Describe it, probably, very similar to what you would do if you couldn't see. You know, I guess, because, I mean, I'm sure she has enough.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started, Sharon, we ready?
Yes, sir.
All right. Welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting, eight thirty AM, Wednesday, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Please use the, obviously, if you're listening, you'll see it later, but the entrance off Baccarat Boulevard. Please note, City Council chambers is open to the public. All are welcome to attend this meeting. Social distancing and screening will be enforced. Any member of the public wishing to comment may do so at this meeting at the appropriate time. This time, we'll call Pastor Don Steriano from Kingdom Life Church to the front to give us our invocation. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Please stand.
Bow your heads. Father, we love you. We take a moment to just pause and acknowledge your presence and welcome your glory to fill this room and the proceedings that will take place. I pray where there's strife and there would be peace, and I just ask God that you would just give all the wisdom of Solomon, watch over our leaders and all of the wonderful citizens of the friendly city. I pray for your kingdom to come, and you will to be done, in Bradenton as it is in heaven. And to close, in the words of the Apostle Paul, summing it all up, friends, I'd say to you, you would do best by filling your minds and meditating on the things that are true, noble, reputable, authentic, compelling, the gracious, the best, and not the worst, the beautiful, and not the ugly. Things to praise, not things to curse. Put things into practice, the things that you have learned from me and what you have heard and realized. Do that, and the God who makes everything work together will work you into his most excellent harmonies. I pray this all in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, thank you. Please join us. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Call the meeting to order. I do wanna do one thing first. Mrs. Barnaby, Councilwoman Barnaby is on the phone, and she'd like to make a statement. Councilwoman Barnaby, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
How I wish I could be there today, however. I was told that I came into contact with someone who tested positive for the coronavirus. And following the advice of the public health officials, as well as my physician, I'm quarantining at home for ten days. Once that is done, I will go and have another COVID test, and I promise I won't see you all until I have negative tests. I've had two negative tests, I am not suffering from the virus, I'm not having any of the effects of it, but in an abundance of caution and in accordance with our public health guidelines, I'm quarantining. So I missed you, but I am as close as the phone, and I will be listening and participating over the phone lines today. So good morning, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Barnaby. Mrs. Bochamp. Proclamations.
Proclamation. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'll be doing the proclamation from the podium today on behalf of the mayor. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Bradenton, I do hereby issue this proclamation honoring Government Finance Professionals Week, March fifteenth through nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Whereas the Florida Government Finance Officers Association is a professional association founded in nineteen thirty-seven and serves more than thirty-three hundred professionals from state, county, and city governments, school districts, colleges, and universities, special districts, and private firms. And whereas the FGFOA is dedicated to being your professional resource by providing opportunities through education, networking, leadership, and information. And whereas this Government Finance Professionals Week, sponsored by the FGFOA and all of its member government organizations, is a week-long series of activities aimed at recognizing government finance professionals and the vital services they provide to our state and our community. And whereas during this week, government finance professionals throughout the state of Florida will be acknowledged for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, is mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim March fifteenth through nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as Government Finance Professionals Week in the city of Bradenton, and acknowledge all government finance professionals throughout the state and here in the city for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you.
Right now, I'd like to ask our finance professionals to come forward, please.
Please.
I'd like to introduce them, for those of you who don't know, this is Tom Kelly, our accounting manager.
Thank you.
Al Viegas, who's one of our accounting clerks. Donna Smith, one of our accounting clerks. Brand-new Cherie Sewell, who's our staff accountant. And Linda Guth, who really doesn't wanna be here today. She's our accounting analyst, and she deserves to be seen as well. There couldn't be a more appropriate time for these folks to come forward. We've just undergone a five-to-six-month external audit, and they're all still standing, and so are all of the rest of us, and there have, it's gone very well, I'm very proud to say. So they're finalizing the CAFR right now, and it's been really the peak time for them. So I'm really glad that this is the opportunity that we have to acknowledge them. These five folks work with every department in the city for all of the finance and accounting needs. It's really incredible. I was just sitting, and I jotted down just a few things off the top of my head. All of the money coming in and going out of the city. All city assets, banking taxes, grants, investments, debt, financial reporting, come from these five folks. I couldn't be more proud, and I know Carl joins me in saying the same thing. We just wanna thank them for their dedication to the city. We're really proud to have them all on board. So next time you go down the accounting hallway, give them a smile and a nod or a thumbs up, and just acknowledge that they're really doing everything they can for the city. Couldn't be prouder, and I know Tom might like to say a couple words. Okay.
Good morning. I'd like to thank you all for this recognition, and also my staff for the hard work they put in. They do it with integrity. We get a lot of work done and meeting a lot of deadlines. Linda Guth has been with the city for twenty-one years, and she keeps a low profile, but she does a ton of work, and we appreciate that. The other three people in the staff are relatively new to us. Cherie came from Anchorage, Alaska, through Colorado to here. I think this is her last stop, chasing warm weather, hopefully. But, you know, Al's an accounting clerk that came with us from private industry, as did Donna. She was at Coastal Orthopedics for a number of years, and she's doing accounts payable for us. So just a great group. It's good that they do things with the highest integrity, takes a lot of pressure off me. So I have a lot of confidence in them, and we appreciate you recognizing us today. Thank you.
Thank you, and I know all the things that you do sometimes behind the scenes, but the most important, everybody's happy today 'cause they got their paycheck.
That's right.
The whole city, so that's the most important.
That's the number one priority.
So that's, without you guys, that wouldn't happen, so thank you very much. Anyone else, comments, or, yes, to Carl?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna thank them and recognize the entire staff that has worked along, you know, with Sharon and previously with me for the longest time. You know, one little-known fact from the city of Bradenton is that they, the Government Finance Officers Association has presented a certificate of accomplishment or achievement for your CAFR, which goes through a review, goes through your audit review, goes through a third-party review, and then gets ultimately to the GFOA. And we, in the city of Bradenton, I'm not sure the number of years now, 'cause I didn't read in front of the CAFR, but it's only been, for whatever number of years you can receive it, we have received it. So I think it's probably about thirty-five years now, which ties us for the longest in the state of Florida, continuously being able to get that certification, so. We're very proud of that when it comes in each year. It's not just one you pay for and get when you see the comments that come back, because it's a different review person every year that goes through it. They always find something different.
Always.
And you always get really mad at them. But, in essence, it's that with the clean opinions that come through is really what the key to the statements are. So we appreciate them, all of them new, so just let you know that, thank you.
Thank you, and great job, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
You too.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for the citizen comments now. So there's just a couple to move them around, and then we'll do the presentation, 'cause that'll be a little bit longer. So I've got two citizen comments. And obviously, they'll be accepted at this time on non-agenda items. Comments will be accepted on the public hearings and agenda items at the appropriate time. So you have three minutes, I have two on Earth Day. So did you wanna come together, or is it something separate you wanted to say? Come up, I've got Jennifer Hoffman first.
We can do it together or something.
Okay. Okay, I mean, it's the same thing, I think.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so Joanne Spencer and Jennifer Hoffman. Okay.
Okay. I'm not seeing it, this is not my computer system, so I apologize, and I'll just.
I can help you.
Just scan through.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Okay, that's fine, I can screen through it. For the record, Jennifer Hoffman, Executive Director of Keep Manatee Beautiful. We have been partnering for three years with the county and all of the cities on doing an Earth Day. This year, our Earth Day project has had to morph because of COVID. Last year, we lost it completely. This year, what we have decided to do is a neighborhood revitalization along the MLK corridor. So essentially Seventh Street East to Seventh Street West, along MLK. We are working with the local churches, the neighborhood associations, a couple of different groups that involve residents of there. Our format every year is a morning of service and afternoon of celebration. So our morning of service this time is going to include a neighborhood-wide litter cleanup. We will also have yard work that people can sign up for, small handyman jobs, trimming and house painting for a couple of very special people. Everything will be on a lottery system based on what we can afford to do in the neighborhoods. We will also be addressing minor citations that our volunteerism can help get rid of for you guys. And we are going to work with the tree board and with the forestry service, and we're hoping to give out between two and four hundred trees to this neighborhood. We are also taking an empty vacant lot that is owned by the church, Ward Temple AME, and we are doing a pollinator garden with a meditation sitting area. And so there's a lot of things, and we're looking to have two hundred-plus volunteers helping this day. And the afternoon of celebration is going to be similar to what we held in Pride Park, and that's going to be free food, free music. We will have a couple of tents available with different fun activities for kids. We are partnering with the CRA. We are partnering with Waste Pro and Waste Management. We are partnering with departments that you have. And so I am coming before you today to respectfully request that the city allocate five thousand dollars to help us achieve this event. I will also let you know that I have asked for in-kind, as far as dumpsters and correct disposal of things like paint and any other hazardous materials. And that is my three minutes. If anybody has any questions, I am happy to answer them if you email me, that type of thing.
Mr. Callahan?
Yeah, we directed to come in here to be able to make sure if there was an ask to ask you. I think there's a couple of funding sources, either from your promotional, from the city council, and since it does involve two CRAs, 'cause Ninth Street bisects both the fourteen, or both the central CRA and the Bradenton CRA at that point. I believe within, under the authorization of the executive director, there's twenty-five-hundred-dollar grants that would probably be available if they were so inclined to be able to do that as a method of funding. So that's why we directed them to, they'd already reached out to the CRA, but I think that's probably within the authority of the executive director. Certainly, if you guys are thinking that it sounds good from a city's perspective.
Okay, all sounds good, any comment?
I spoke to the executive director about this.
Okay, all right, so that's taken care of, thank you.
Yeah.
Do we need?
I spoke to executive director as well, and, you know, I don't see any problem with this, but we, you know, the question was whether we, she has the authority to authorize it without a vote, or can we bring this up?
I think they could probably try to fit that under their grant program. We have the neighborhood improvement grants, usually it's for an individual, but I think when you look at a neighborhood like this, it could probably qualify as well.
Okay, all right. Joanne Spencer?
Good morning, Joanne Spencer, eleven oh five, six-three East. I was born here, and I, my name is Joanne Washington Spencer. And if you ride down Dr. Martin Luther King, you'll see Washington Park. My grandfather had a store, and my grandfather also worked for Borgley Brothers, if you all remember that. Proud of my neighborhood, as I was driving into Bradenton this morning downtown, I thought, boy, has it changed. And I thank you, as mayor and the council people, for considering, and Jennifer for even having that vision. And it's going to work. I've been on Keep Manatee Beautiful Board, and I pick up trash in my neighborhood, and I bust when they throw things down, and even across from my church, St. Stephen's ME. And everybody is excited about what this vision that we're gonna have, and it's gonna work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering if the ladies would share with us the date, day, and time, and as well as, I know they mentioned the website, but is there also a phone number they could give if someone was interested in either volunteering or donating?
Sure, okay.
I'd be very happy to. So the date is April twenty-fourth. April twenty-second is Earth Day every year. As I said, we missed the fiftieth anniversary, so we were trying to go big this year. But our event will be April twenty-fourth. It will be zoned in that we'll have a couple of different places for volunteers to show up right there along MLK, it'll be easy to find. And Keep Manatee Beautiful is the one that is handling all of the fundraising for this event. So you can contact us at manateebeautiful.com, or you can call us at nine four one, seven nine five, eight two seven two, and we'll be happy to help with anyone who wants to volunteer or donate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jeannie will get that on our website for all of the people to see also. Patrick?
Yeah, and the time was morning services nine to twelve, and the afternoon celebration, twelve to three, was the second part of our question.
Yes. Councilwoman Coachman?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanna say thank you, because you checked off something on my campaign to-do list. So it's really a great start, I just can't thank you enough, and I'll be there.
And then one thing, I know a couple of years ago, we did a huge tree, a give-out, plant give-out in some of the neighborhoods in Ward Two, where obviously I was councilman at the time. You're seeing the fruits of that labor with the crepe myrtles now. And I mean, they're just starting to bloom now and go out. So, you know, they were about as thick as this pole right here when we got them, but now they're actually bushes and within just a couple of years. So it's a great program, and that's the big day that you give a lot of the stuff out. So, you know, small now, but they get big quick. So thank you for what you do, for Keep Manatee Beautiful and all that, so we appreciate it. All right, we'll move on, Danny Anderson. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, my name's Danny Anderson, I'm a fifty-year-old disabled vet. I'm representing my businesses downtown Bradenton here, Anderson Auto Repair. I've been here for, this today, this year will be my twenty-ninth year in the downtown area. My problem is, is that the, where my business is, I rent two of the three buildings that are owned and operated by Anderson Auto, and the block has come under contract, with the exception of my business. The, the people that contracted the property offered me a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for my property, and I declined, I wanted more. And since then, I've been wanting to renovate that building and found that the building is non-conforming now. So I can operate out of the building, but I can't use, I can't make it useful for what I need it for. So now they've come back, and they've offered me a hundred thousand dollars for the property. So they've gone down since they've learned that the building is non-conforming. I need some guidance on what to do, since now I have to leave.
Do we send that to?
What is the site?
Six oh one Ninth Street West.
The building in question is on eight twelve Seventh Avenue West, that I need renovated.
It would, what'll happen is, Mr. Callahan, our ministry.
I will get with the planning department.
With the planning department and work through, and then get with you and figure out options and situations.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any comment?
I was gonna ask, Mr. Callahan, Mr. Anderson called me, 'cause he's kind of at a junction of all three wards. The affordable housing project that's involved, it's not, it's not a city project at all, but didn't we, for them to go for the tax credits, didn't we grant them some kind of letter or something?
We, we gave them support, but I did not believe that that got, that got rated high in the last round. I will have to check and see that, so. When I checked the results of the round, 'cause this is right on the corner, this is the old scooter garage, all of that, and the surrounding properties, yes. I did not think that they, that they overall scored well, so I'll have to check even with them, but they're still trying to go forward with that, because I thought that that didn't, didn't make it. So I'll check with the planning department, I, first I'd heard of this, and then I'll see from HTG what their situation is as well.
Okay, and then my question too, so we offered them support, basically they can go through the affordable tax credit application with our, with our, you know.
Right.
Yeah, so is that, did we did, was, when we gave them that, was that for one year or till the end of time?
We only, we, since we didn't enter into an agreement with them other than saying that we would support the funding that was necessary, the four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, if they were successful in their grant, different than if we controlled the property.
Right, right.
So we'd only said that for that particular year.
So it's for one year.
Well, I, like I said, we'll have to reach out to HTG and see what the situation is.
Okay.
All right, so he'll get with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys have a great day.
All right, is there any other citizen comment on non-agenda items? Anyone else? All right, we'll move forward, Ms. Bochamp?
Next, we have a solar co-op presentation by Solar United Neighbors.
All right. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Stephen Murphy, live at nineteen oh eight Forty-Eighth Street West here in Bradenton. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. This is the third anniversary of the first solar co-op that we did in Manatee County. The Manatee League of Women Voters, in conjunction with Solar United Neighbors, did a co-op here in Manatee three years ago, was one of the most successful in the state. We had three hundred homeowners from Manatee County sign up to go solar. They went through an informational, they joined, they got information from coming to meetings, and then eventually seventy-five individuals put solar on their roofs three years ago, and it was such a successful co-op that we're doing it again. And so I'm here this morning, let me see if I can get this to work. I'm here this morning just to go over a little bit about what a co-op is. And, let's see. And, okay. All right, so it's up there, can everyone see it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So who are Solar United Neighbors? Where there, it's a group of people that band together to get new energy for their homes. And and what our vision is, is that by going solar, we fight for our rights as citizens to produce our own energy. We join together, and by doing that, we're able then to go out and do an RFP and get a vendor to come in and do solar co-op for us. And why is that beneficial? It's beneficial because you get the best value on installation and support throughout the process. When we did this three years ago, we were able to get lifetime, twenty-five-year warranties for both the product that was put on the roof and the inverters that go with it, as well as, I believe, ten- or fifteen-year service warranties. And those are unheard of, to get those kinds of things, but because of group purchasing, we're able to do that. And just to give you a little background on how many, what we've done here in Florida, we've put solar, and when I say we, we didn't personally do it, the vendors that we selected, that individual community selected did it. But since we started about twenty sixteen, we've put eighteen hundred and seventy panel, eighteen hundred and seventy homes have been, had solar put on them, we created two hundred and eighty-seven jobs. We've invested more than forty-one point two million dollars in the economy. We've reduced our carbon pollution by two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, almost two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. We've generated seventeen, almost eighteen thousand kilowatts of electricity. And our savings on electricity, lifetime savings, is seventy-seven million dollars by producing your own energy. And that's, that's really pretty, pretty exciting. My personal goal is that we need, having, living in Florida, and I've been here since ninety-nine, I have noticed it's gotten warmer. And I don't have grandchildren that live here, but if you have grandchildren that are living here, when they're my age, and I'm seventy-four, it's gonna be a lot warmer. And how do we make that not happen? We reduce our carbon footprint. Putting solar on your roof reduces your carbon footprint, just like putting trees, planting trees and bushes in neighborhoods and forests, mini forests, reduces our carbon footprint. So that's what that's all about. And to give you an idea, this is who, all the groups that are involved here in Manatee on this solar co-op. It's a joint co-op with Sarasota County, so we have the city of Sarasota, we have Sarasota County, we have the League of Women Voters for both Manatee and Sarasota, we have Manatee County, we have the Sierra Club, the Gulf Coast Community Foundation, the Barneck, Baronic Foundation, we have the Mott Marine, the South Florida Museum. And we're coming here today to ask the city to be a, to join us in this, in providing support to the co-op. And I think you all got this handout here, and I'll go to that next, if I can figure out how to get out of here. I don't have a Windows machine. But the handouts you got is sort of, it talks about why to go solar, and it says what's happening in a, we had sixty-four communities. But the thing that I wanna draw your attention to is how can the city be involved? Well, you can be involved by joining and being a sponsor. You can provide, you can provide support through, by public, by publicizing the event, publicizing what's going on. One of the things that we found very beneficial when counties and/or cities join us is that they're able to communicate to their citizens. is that they're able to communicate to their citizens more effectively than we are, and it's from a source that they trust. And it's a source that normally we would not be able to get to, the same way the city does. Cities and counties send out utility bills, or they send out electronic bills, and we have, and those, and they, many times, they put inserts into those bills about the solar co-op and telling people where they can go to get information on it. And we have found when cities and counties do that, we get a lot more response because we're targeting people that wouldn't normally, you know, go out and research this kind of thing. But when you begin to see the dollars and cents and how you actually save money, they do that. And then on the second page, you can see all of the, the communities that have joined with solar co-op. St. Petersburg, Orange County, Brevard, Sarasota, St. John's, the Miami Dade. All these communities have helped, have helped in the establishment and, and support of solar co-ops. So, what I'm asking today is if the city will join the other municipalities or counties in this endeavor. And if so, I think I've sent Tamara a form that she needs, or someone needs to complete. And then once it's there, we'll get your logo, and you'll be on, on the web with us, and we'll provide you information that you can share with your citizens by putting information on your website. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
So, is there any cost to the city?
None, none.
All right, so.
I mean, some cities and counties have actually paid for a staff person, but we're your staff. We're working, so we're all volunteers here. There's no cost.
So, is the Solar United a not-for-profit?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
501(c)(3).
Yes, and the League of Women Voters is a non-for-profit. In fact, most, everybody that is on the list is a non-for-profit. And this, again, is for residential. We don't do businesses, we don't do schools or county governments, but we do residential.
Any other questions? Mr. Callahan, any comments?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, is, any decision, but you know?
It, it seems, I mean, to me, it seems all right to me. I'm looking at, you know, what our involvement was. First, first off, is there a cost? No. Looks like, you know, looking at where we would do, one, an elected official can go become a public exposed person. Well, that's, you can do that anytime you want. You know, removed government can publicize a co-op. I, I don't see any problem with that. If, you know, I don't know if anyone would, does, but, you know, and then can provide space for meetings. We do that sometimes. I don't know how often you'd, you'd want to do that, but.
Because of COVID, everything is done by Zoom. There's no, I mean, we may do some outside events, but they wouldn't be in, inside anywhere because we just, because of COVID.
Right, so, so that's, it's, and then, and then the last, we, last bullet point, you lead by example. Little known fact, this entire ceiling, this entire roof of this building is covered with solar panels and has been for a decade now.
I know, I, I learned that. Very impressed.
So, it doesn't seem like it's much of an ask.
Mr. Rudisal, is there anything that you've looked at, or?
Well, no, I haven't seen anything. I'm not totally sure what the, what the ask is as far as in order to put together the proper motion.
We're asking you to support the co-op, and that means basically putting information in your, on your website, maybe sending out an insert in your utility bill, something like that. That's really it. And allowing us to put your logo on with all the other logos of the support.
It's an endorsement, it sounds like.
So, I, I think what we might do, if, if this works from a timing standpoint, is look at, look at some of the other resolutions of support. Is that, is that typically what's been done in the other jurisdictions?
I don't know.
Okay.
Based on up here.
Manatee County didn't even, I mean, they just, the administration just gave us their logo and said they, so it wasn't, it didn't even rise to the level of needing. It would be nice to have a resolution, but we don't.
Mrs. Bochamp?
I just might mention that we would need your permission to use the logo because we do have the ordinance in place that council gives permission to share the logo for any use, and so you'd have to approve that. And also, we'd want your direction for the website. And in addition, if you want to go ahead and do a flyer in the utility bill, the cost for that's about $600 or so. So, just so you know that.
Why don't we let Mr. Rudisal research it, see what other resolutions have come up in other cities? Because we got a list of cities, and then make it simple as possible, but just bring it back to us.
We can bring it back with.
Quickly.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yep.
And I, and also, Scott, at that point, you know, if we're giving some form of endorsement, make sure that we're not officially endorsing. If something were to go wrong with a solar panel down the road, we don't want to get involved with that, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll keep the process going. Thank you. All right, Mrs. Bochamp?
Yes, next we have the consent agenda. We'll be asking for approval of items A through H.
I have a motion to con-
I'd like to remove item A.
A? Okay.
A.
A is an apple.
A is an apple.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Sanders has a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus.
Minus A.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All in, or we'll start in Ward 5 to approve. Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Mary Ann.
Can you hear it, Mary Ann?
Did we lose her?
All right, Ward 3, and then Ward 4.
Yes.
All right, so Kerry's 4 to 0. I think we lost Mrs. Barnaby, possibly. Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, I'm here and I vote yes.
Okay, so 5 to 0, thank you. All right, Mr. Sanders?
City of Bradenton City Council Workshop, February 3, 2021. About halfway down on the first page, it says, after a brief discussion, it was a general consensus of council to hire management company to lease and manage the retail spaces. This is referring to the retail spaces under the garage. Mr. Callahan recommended staff put out a request for qualifications, RFQ, to manage and release the retail space. Mayor Brown agreed and requested Mr. Callahan bring responses to the RFQ back for council's review. That is not my understanding of what occurred that day, and it was in a workshop, which there is no voting authority to make an RFQ request.
Scott?
And I think what the minutes reflect is that there was a consensus, so there was no official action taken, but staff can put out an RFQ.
And still to bring, it says to bring it back to the council.
Sure.
Well, it says, recommend that staff put out a request, RFQ. You don't have to have a vote to do that?
No, sir.
And it would still come back to the council before any decision?
I understand that, but. So, we can put out RFQs in workshops?
Well, staff can put out an RFQ on their own, and so that's, they were seeking guidance from the council at that workshop.
Right.
That was the direction.
I didn't realize we could do that.
It wasn't voted on, but it would be, nothing would be confirmed until after it came back to the council. It was just the process of starting, moving that forward.
Yeah, I, I just didn't understand. We, we could ask for RFQs out of workshops. I mean, obviously, I'm wrong, but.
All right.
Mr. Roth, is that your understanding? I mean, I, maybe I'm just.
I don't, I don't know RFQ process. I guess, I guess my thought, I didn't even see this, to be quite honest. My thought was, I, I think we entertained the idea. It was brought forward that day as a, as a fresh, new idea. I think we were all interested in the prospect of that. I didn't think we actually were making a motion to move forward on it. I mean, because there are so many unknowns of, I wanted to know, would that be, would that be answered in a request or proposal? Were we talking about management? Were we talking about, is someone going to do it on a commission? Are they going to charge us, this, this, you know? Those things aren't making any money. I don't want to start giving someone money to, to manage something that's losing, you know? Well, it's net neutral right now, so I, I didn't think we did anything that day.
But wouldn't, wouldn't we have a, a parameters for an RFQ?
Let me, let me clarify that. I think you all are both, everybody's right in this. I think the idea was to bring back a request for qualifications for you to review before we sent it out.
Okay.
Not send out an RFQ, put together some sort of RFQ.
So, that's, it's a recommendation for an RFQ?
RFQ, bring back to council, do you like the RFQ, and then we take it out.
I understand, and, and that happens frequently with minutes. I've discovered that sometimes you can't, because, you know, you're picking up conversations and you only, you, you have to really go back and listen to the tape.
We didn't have any intent of going out for the, the group yet. It would be, get it to y'all so you could decide if that sounded right or looked right.
When I read through it, that was my mind thinking that it would come back to this council to determine what we wanted to go forward.
So, we're mentioning, is, is, are we, is, are we?
We haven't completed that process yet, but that's.
And that's something we'll talk about at the end of the meeting in my comments going forward.
Okay, then that's all I have, and I have a.
Motion to approve A.
A.
All right, second. All right, any further discussion? Start the vote in Ward 1.
Yes.
2?
Yes.
Yes.
3?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving on, Mrs. Bochamp?
Next, under Business Advertising Petitions, Hearings, and Communications, we have Resolution 21-26. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bradenton, Florida approving the acceptance of $23,000 as full and final payment of HLMP loan 640 and ship loan 641, authorizing the mayor to execute documents to affect releases of liens and providing an effective date. And I believe Vicki is here to discuss the details of this. She is asking for a vote on this today.
This is a property that we provided HLMP funding for wind mitigation and ship funding to repair the property. The elderly homeowner has moved out. I think she was declining. The property is now vacant. It's on code enforcement's radar. It's in, it's in foreclosure. They're trying to sell it to avoid foreclosure. And apparently, in order to make that deal work, we would need to accept a payment of $23,000, which is about 60% of the balance remaining on the lien. Does anybody have any questions?
60% of the ba, I, I'm sure I understand that.
It is, there is a balance on the liens.
On the liens?
Yes.
Mortgages or, or other liens?
No, it's mortgages.
Mortgages, okay.
For the, the mortgages for what we put out to repair and mitigate the property.
If, if I could clarify it, there is, she's talking about the city's liens for the, for the ship funds, right?
Yes, and the HLMP.
An HLMP.
So, if we accept the $23,000, that represents 60% of the remaining balance of those two liens.
Yeah, these are not desirable for us necessarily to do that, but in lieu of getting foreclosed on, and generally, our lien can get foreclosed out, therefore, it's an advantage to us. If this is what it takes, at least we get part of the money back, recirculate it back into the program.
Our only option would be to buy out the first lien holders, right?
Right.
So, I, I, I'm not happy, but it's, that's, we don't have much of a choice, I don't think.
No, it's not the most desirable outcome, but it's kind of better than coming up empty-handed, basically.
Well, I mean, we don't want to own that property, I don't think.
No.
And would you have to put out another, how much? 60,000?
No, in order, well, in order to buy the property from the first mortgager, the seller now is offering $100,000 for the property.
If I, if I could clarify, so let's remember what we're talking about here with these, the ship funds and HLMP. When the city does one of these loans, it is intended that as long as the property owner stays in the property for a period of time, that loan is totally forgiven. Is that, is that correct? So, if they, if they were able to stay in the property over that period of time, the city wouldn't, wouldn't get these funds back at all. But sometimes you have situations like these where, for whatever the circumstances, the person's not able to do that. This one, and, and in most cases, there is an existing first mortgage that the city is behind. So, that's what is either already in foreclosure. I, I think it's already in foreclosure at this point. So, this, this is a short sale scenario.
So, 23,000 nets out to the sale price?
No.
No?
No, they're, they're going to short sale the first mortgage on it.
Okay.
And then they're going to kind of like give us a partial payoff.
Yeah, I think, I think the answer is yes, but your question, with the sales price minus whatever the first is taking and then the city's.
This is what's left?
Correct.
Okay, that's the net, okay.
One, one question that I have, and then we'll go to others. But when we get that $23,000, we get to put that back in?
Well, the HLMP funding, we pay, we'll be able to pay off this, I think it's a little over $6,000 on that lien. That money will go back to the State Division of Emergency Management.
We don't get it back to you, it goes back to?
No, but the, the other money, the ship portion of it, that comes back to the city as program income, and we can recycle those funds.
That's 6,000?
No, the HLMP portion is a little over 6,000. The ship portion will be probably around 17,000.
Oh, so we get it, we get, get it all?
Well, we would get 17,000.
17,000, but the 6,000 goes back in the ship?
Go, no, the 17,000, or the 6,000 goes back to the Department of Emergency Management.
Oh, so, okay, we get 17 out of the 23, okay.
Yeah.
I got it, I got it.
Councilman Koch?
I was just going to say that my experience with short sales is the banks want to see everybody getting a haircut if they're getting one.
Right.
And so, and this will get it moving forward rather than having to kind of go for three, four years, so.
Good, thank you.
And it's already a problem property?
Yeah, if it's a problem property, it's only going to get worse. I definitely would be in favor of this.
I'm in agreement with it, and I'll make a motion to approve it.
So, Resolution 21-26, motion to approve by Councilman Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Councilwoman Coker, is there any other comments or anything else we need to do before we vote? Scott?
Nope, I, I don't think this is a public hearing item, so.
All right, so we'll start the vote in Ward 2.
Yes.
3?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
1?
Yes.
Thank you, Kerry's unanimously. Thank you, Ms. White. Mrs. Bochamp?
Our next two items are both quasi-judicial, so we'll go ahead and administer to the oath. Anyone wishing to address counsel during the following public hearings will stand and raise their right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you. Our first item is case number SU.20.4817, Ward 4, sorry, Neighborhood 20.12. This is a public hearing. It's a request by Peter Pensah, AICP of Avid Group LLC agent for Bradenton Land Group LLC owner for a special use permit for a hotel in the SCC Suburban Commercial Corridor zoning district. The property is located at 101664th Street Court East, Bradenton, Florida 34208, parcel ID 1442800059.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, before, before Marshall gets started here, these next two items are both quasi-judicial. And so, because Mrs. Barnaby is participating by phone, I want to make clear a few things. First, I want to check with Mrs. Barnaby now to make sure that she has, I'm assuming that she has the, the agenda packet in front of her, so she would have available all the information that is in the staff report and the application submitted by the applicant and all the things that are included in the agenda packet. But I'd like her to confirm that on the record. And then, second of all, it'd be my recommendation that for both of these applicants, that they be given the opportunity, if they would like a continuance, to have the full counsel present for the hearing. I think they should be given that opportunity. If they're, if they're willing to proceed with Mrs. Barnaby on the phone, I think that's fine, but we need to be cognizant of it during the hearing. fine, but we need to be cognizant of it during the hearing and be, keep an eye on it. If there are, if there are things that are being presented that she's not able to see, we need to make sure that, that they're being described so that she can make her decision based on the evidence that is in the record. If during the hearing it's determined, or if the applicant feels that Mrs. Barnaby is not able to get the information, then I would recommend that at any time they be given the opportunity to request a continuance and come back at the next, at the next meeting.
Can they, do they have to do that before presentation, or can they do that after presentation or after a vote? Because I didn't think, I thought councilman, councilperson had to be present to even make the vote.
Oh, no, she, she's able to vote. We, as long as there's a quorum physically present, Councilwoman Barnaby is able to vote. So, but, but my recommendation is if at any time during the hearing, the applicant wants a continuance, I would recommend that, that we give that continuance, so.
We can do that as the process goes forward. They decide, hey, we want a continuance.
Correct.
We can gavel out the continuance.
Right.
All right, any other questions? And Councilwoman Barnaby, you heard all of that?
Yes, sir, I did hear all of that. I am, I, I do have the council agenda packet that was brought to me on Monday afternoon. If there has been any additions, I have not received any additions. Plus, if the applicant, either applicant is going to be presenting information that was not included originally in the agenda packet, as Attorney Rudezil has said, they're going to have to describe it to me. I did check yesterday to see if there were any additions to the packet at all. I was told there were no additions received, and there were no changes to the agenda packet after I received it. So I do have everything that was included in the agenda packet. I was able during the solar presentation, the solar panel presentation, I'm sorry, solar co-op, because I was emailed some of the flyers, and I think everybody received that email, I was able to pull up those flyers and look at them as the gentleman was using them to support his request. But I, I have the packet, however, if anything else is brought forward, for example, if someone from the public brings something forward to show the council, it will have to be described to me. And I think that Attorney Rudezil is showing a great deal of wisdom by suggesting that if any time either applicant wants a continuance, that the council should agree to that.
Okay.
And if, if we have the ability, for example, if there's a presentation that could be emailed to Councilwoman Barnaby, I think that, that would be optimal if that's something that can be done.
And, and there's been no additional information from the packet you have, Councilwoman Barnaby, as of right now, unless the applicant brings something forward. So I think we go forward, and if the applicant has heard that, that if something changes, we can continue it if it needs to be.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Issa, do we have overriding authority for proxy votes? Because proxy votes is what Mrs. Barnaby would be doing by not being present.
No, she's, she's still voting in person, she's just voting by phone.
Not here?
Correct.
We've done it? Okay, I, I just didn't realize, because I just, it says that council members must be present.
I, I think a lot of boards are doing it this way mainly.
Because of COVID.
Yes, but the, the governor overruled, he only did it for a short period of time, and now he says you have to be present.
If I, if I can, first of all, the participating by phone or other electronic means is not, is not that uncommon, and it's always been authorized as long as there's a physical quorum present.
Okay.
What, what the governor had authorized for a period of time during COVID was to have less than a physical quorum present. You could have entire boards meeting virtually, which, which a number of jurisdictions did, but what's proposed or what's, what's occurring today with Ms. Barnaby by phone with the rest of the council present is, is not, is, is authorized and is not unusual.
So if I'm out of town, I can, I can call in and make a vote?
Yes.
All right, so the only thing I read here is if the city or town has not adopted a rural procedure, to the contrary, council members must be present at the time the vote is taken.
And over the years that I was on the council, Mr. Sanders, there was a time when I think there were some health issues and different things in council. Remember, I was one time in North Carolina, and I was able to call in and, you know, so that's been a policy that the city has, and I don't know if it's written, we maybe should, with all the COVID stuff and.
It's indicating we have to have a policy, a procedure, a written procedure to, to over, because that's a state statute.
Yeah, I, I don't know what you're looking at, but I'll tell you, what the attorney general opinions have said on this is that it should be under extraordinary circumstances where people are allowed to participate by phone, and that would generally be determined by the board. I don't know that there's really statutory support for that, but if the, if the council wanted to make that determination, obviously, I think this would be a case where it would be applicable.
I'm not opposed to this.
Right.
Don't get me wrong, but I want to know that I can do this if I'm out of town. And if the answer is yes, then I'll be participating that way sometimes. I, I, I don't necessarily agree with you, but if that's the rules.
Right, that, that's what I'm saying, the.
Expect it.
Right, according to the attorney general, their recommendation is that it only be done in extraordinary circumstances, so.
Mr. Roth?
So this has come up with the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council that, that when the governor gave the COVID, you know, virtual meetings, basically, he gave a special exception to go beyond Florida state law.
Right.
There was a law that's several years old that allowed for members to attend virtually, because I know that we've gone back to that at Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, because we still have people coming down from Citrus and Hernando. I mean, people are really making a commitment to go to that meeting, and some of them, because of COVID, are not. And we've, we've gone back to where, and we have legal counsel there and explained in, so when the governor rescinded his ability to meet virtually, we've gone back to the original state statute, which I think is several years old, that says that you can, as long as you have X amount present, you can, someone can call in. Because we're still doing, I just was at a meeting on Monday where, you know, a third of the people weren't there.
I just want to make a comment to that, because I was on the Tampa Bay Transit Authority, and liaison from the state legislature came in and scolded our board for having people not present at meetings and threatened to pull the funding. So I don't want us to get in any kind of a quandrum with, with state statute if we need to have it on record to do it this way.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I'm asking, you know? I'm not, I'm not trying to be argumentative with you, but it's, it's like, if, you know, where's limitations to, to not be present here, we can do, and I don't.
Well, I, I think what you're saying is that, you know, it's not the preferred method, right? And so that's why the attorney general has recommended that it only be done in extraordinary circumstances. So it shouldn't just be a convenience thing, because obviously, it's better for the public if they could see and hear everything that's going on.
But you do have to have a quorum present.
Correct. So the, the statutory requirement is that there be a physical quorum present.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that's something good I think we'll follow up on, but also I think that's why Scott brought it up today, just in case. There was an issue, we can, we can have a couple of options, so. All right, moving forward, Marshall? Thank you.
Good morning, Marshall McCreary, planning and community development. And we do have a couple of business items for you all this morning. You're accustomed to seeing these special uses, and as is applicable for both of these, these are uses that are permissible within the zoning district for the property where they're located, but they're subject to review for the potential for adverse impacts and are only approvable through a special use permit being issued, which can be granted through you guys. First up is case SU.204817. It's a proposal for a hotel in the SCC Suburban Commercial Corridor zoning district. This is property located at 101664th Street Court East. And hopefully, this orient you a little bit. This is out east, 64th Street Court East butts the property to the right there and has a signalized intersection with State Route 64 East just to the north. Property, as I said earlier, flumed and zoned with SCC Suburban Commercial Corridor. So it's anticipating commercial development in keeping with our SCC district, which is intended to serve the needs of the traveling public. The proposed site, as you saw, is currently vacant. As I mentioned, the owner is proposing development of a hotel in the northwest portion of the site with an extension of Amberly Drive, which is the drive that serves Amberly Community just to the west there, and extending that over to the east to 64th Street Court East, providing for that connection. Also proposed is an approximately 80,000 square foot lot to the southeast of the property, which will be used for future retail development at some point in time. This is the site plan that's included within your packet that shows the proposed hotel site. You see it's oriented in the northwest portion of the property. The site plan shows adequate parking to serve the number of unit, or the number of rooms within the facility. It is perhaps not clear, because it wasn't stated in this particular staff report, but there is an accompanying application to this that was considered by the planning commission when they considered the special use last month, and that was for variance to allow for the height that they proposed. They propose an 80-foot structure, which is compliant with zoning. Zoning allows them to do that, provided they bring the building in one foot for each additional foot they go up. The code allows for that. But the code also has a little anomaly in it, which we're going to fix, which limits the number of stories in terms of, and as well as the number of feet. And it doesn't give you the correction to that number of stories that the additional setback gives you to the number of feet. So they got that variance granted, so the 80-foot height is endorsed. And they are providing significant setback in order to achieve that 80-foot height. They could achieve a higher height if they wanted with the setback that's provided. But I did read in the staff report, they are providing an extra effort to locate the hotel as far away from the residential property, which lies to the west as possible. It's about 240 feet between the hotel and that Amberly Community. Going back, I'm sorry, the balance of the site is intended to address historic and ongoing flooding associated with both stormwater as well as the flood zone. These are all those criteria that are addressed within your packet, associated with special use reviews. Staff has reviewed each and provided an assessment of each within your staff report. I won't go through each here. I will talk about some of the significant ones that we'll point out. Ingress egress, we do find that it is adequately served by 64th Street Court East, and we do find the extension of Amberly to be a desirable creation of an additional connection point east-west between Morgan Johnson Road or 57th Street East and State Route 64 East. The proposed, the landscape separation strip of at least 10 feet is being addressed. That's a standard for all special uses. There are additional buffering requirements because of the adjoining residential zoning that'll be imposed during the site improvement permit process, but they are meeting the special use requirements by more than delivering the 10-foot buffer. Service areas in terms of adequacy, the site plan shows adequate locations, generally compliant with state or city standards, but we will ensure compliance during the site improvement permit process. Signs and exterior lighting are subject to review during that process as well. The effective, the value of surrounding properties by this proposed development, we do find the proposed project should enhance the value of surrounding properties by eliminating a vacant commercial site and introducing improvements to the property. The extension of Amberly Drive will increase, increase further options, future options for circulation in the area. And we do find the land is more than adequate to accommodate the building. It falls well below the FAR allowance for SCC district. So staff is recommending approval. We do find the site's well suited to support it. The project is sensitive to nearby residential development by providing significant physical separation, as well as addressing existing flood and stormwater conditions. The use is consistent with surrounding development in the area, and we do find, most importantly, that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan's future lane designation of suburban commercial corridor to support the traveling public. The planning commission considered this item, as I mentioned last month at their regular meeting, and did recommend approval unanimously as well. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and we'll be throughout.
How many stories does this?
It's four stories, 80-foot tall total.
And how many parking spaces?
Ooh, I'd have to go back and count. It, it more than meets the minimum parking requirements, though. There's no ancillary uses associated with it, it is strictly lodging.
Did any of the residents get any, have you heard?
Yes, we did have two residents who spoke at the planning commission. I believe that's reflected in the minutes. They're draft minutes at this point. And the Amberly Community has, a number of residents have called in to inquire and are aware about the proceedings and aware about the proposal. We'll go ahead and point out here, and I'm sure it'll be addressed by the applicant and anyone who speaks about Amberly. Amberly Drive, as you know, is a private road. It was approved as a private road, yet it was required to be stubbed out for future connectivity to a development when it occurred. That is in keeping with our comprehensive plan's direction to provide for interconnectivity among development sites and amongst neighborhoods. So this development achieves that by providing that connection. However, it does not change the private road status of Amberly Drive. Amberly homeowners continue to maintain complete control over access through their community, and it's our expectation that they will erect a gate. We've encouraged them to work with the developer of this site, who indicates they will work with their HOA to achieve whatever security measures they'd like to put in place there.
Okay. Mr. Roth, did you have something?
Yeah, I, on that note, because I do remember when that subdivision was approved, and as I recall, one of the issues that our fire department was concerned about was the cul-de-sac, and so we came up with an extension of, if, when, if and when this property is going to be, you know, developed, that there would be an expectation for an extension of Amberly for probably public safety reasons above anything else.
And, and, and interconnectivity, because it cuts down on vehicular trips and provides alternatives during emergencies and when other access points are blocked. You've done this in other communities recently, too. River Run is a fairly recent one, which was required to stub out to an adjoining undeveloped parcel as well. We have, I experienced frustration yesterday driving through a disjointed neighborhood and not able to get to the destination I needed to get to next without going back out on the road, so interconnectivity is one of our goals from our comp.
So, and, and the developer is putting in, I mean, we're not, we're not building that road, right?
No, no, this will all be developer funded.
So this is, this is fulfilling a requirement or an ask or something that we did back when we allowed the subdivision to be?
Yeah, we're seeing what good, what we believe to be good planning practice puts in place for future development.
Right, and probably, I mean, I would think someday that I, I think that someday that should be a street, not, not just private road, but.
Well, we know from experience that communities that are served by private roads change over time, and their financial burdens change over time, and quite often, cities are approached to take over ownership and maintenance of roads.
Right, right.
So the eventuality may be that this becomes a public road. And, and that's, that, that happens more often than local governments probably would like.
About the time the road wears out.
Well, they're, they're, they have to take care of a lot of different things in that community, and roads become expensive over time, yeah.
Jim's shaking his head.
Stormwater ponds have to be maintained, the common areas, the pool, so, yeah.
Before we, do we ask the applicant to come up at this point, before we open the public hearing?
Well, I think you can open the public hearing and then have the applicant.
All right. We'll open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come first. He does have some Tamra, he has, I think, something, he might, got it?
If I could, before we get started, do, do we have the ability to send that to Mrs. Barnaby?
Thank you, please state your name and address for the record.
Would you like for me to wait till the commissioner returns, or?
He can hear, he can hear you.
Okay.
If I could, I think it would be a good idea to wait and get that to Mrs. Barnaby. But in the meantime, we could ask the applicant on the record if they have any objection to Mrs. Barnaby participating by phone and ask them if they want to request a continuance to have her present.
Do you have any objection to Mrs. Barnaby, Councilwoman Barnaby, being on the phone? And would you like at this time to ask for a continuance?
No, I'm comfortable moving forward. I did hear the discussion with the commission had earlier, and we're proceeding as the situation presents itself here.
And we'll proceed, and then if we go through, we'll let you know. Mrs. Mochamp?
We are scanning the information that's on the flash drive right now, and we will get it to Mrs. Barnaby. It's probably going to take a few minutes.
So why don't we take a five-minute recess, and we'll come back in about five minutes? Thank you. Yes, ma'am. And it is noted that Councilwoman Barnaby does have the information in front of her.
All right.
Proceed, please. Name and address for the record?
Yes. Thank you, and good morning. My name is Peter Pensah. I'm an AISTP certified planner, director of planning with Avid Group. The planners, engineers, and surveyors for the project. Also here with me today is Mike Costello, who is engineer of record on the project.
Thank you.
I'm going to do a brief presentation that was the same one that we presented at the planning commission on February 17th. It reflects a lot of the same information that staff presented, so I'm going to go through it pretty quickly. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me.
Yes, and we are still in the public hearing, so it is open.
The site, in front of you is an aerial photograph showing the site. It is located along the 64 corridor, just west of the I-75 interchange. In front of the site are two fast food restaurants with drive-throughs and a convenience store with both automobile and diesel fueling, catering to highway-oriented development and travel. Excuse me, I'm asking, making it hard to breathe. The corridor has a number of other hotels, restaurants, typical uses you'd expect to see at an interchange. This is a map of the city's zoning. It is the easternmost property in the city. Here's a blow-up of the zoning map showing that it does have commercial zoning, as does the other uses along the 64 corridor. The areas in white are the properties that are located in the unincorporated county. Here's a map of the county zoning, showing that they have commercial zoning along the 64 corridor as well. Here's a copy of the city's future land use map, similar to your zoning. And again, it's commercial zoning in that area, or land use, excuse me. And again, the county land use is similar. This is a colored version of the site plan that was included in your packet, showing that the hotel is located on the northeast portion of the property and about three and a half acres of the total nine and a half acre site. The, excuse me. As was discussed earlier when staff did their presentation, we've designed a roadway to public standards. It's the extension of Amberly Way, which will connect to the cul-de-sac that terminated the end of the residential development to the west of us, and will continue out to 64th Street.
Can you, can I, I just, that was a question I had, since you've got this, this photo here, isn't it one that's not in my pack? So the property, the hotel and parking is obvious, and then you have retention. I noticed another entrance way down, there's a big square there of unused land. Is that future development?
It's future commercial development. There isn't a user secured at this point in time.
A what?
There's not a user at this time.
Okay, I, that's answered.
Yes. Yeah, it'll be a commercial parcel.
That's what I assumed, okay.
There's a fair amount of water that naturally flows across the site currently. That's why you see a number of swelled stormwater systems along the northern boundary, along the frontage on the east, as well as on the south. The, in order to provide for maximum compatibility, since this is a special use, the hotel's located at the northeast corner, both for visibility with regards to its proximity to 64, but also to provide maximum separation from residential. The stormwater and floodplain compensation areas, which are the large ponds you see on the western, basically a third of the property, provide for an open space and physical separation from the residential. And parking is located around the perimeter of the hotel, as you see. The commission had asked earlier, there are 135 parking spaces shown on the plan, and it's 124 room. I've got some photos I'll show you later, but it's a four-story hotel. And I'll go into that a little bit more in a second. The building is approximately, as Marshall presented in his presentation, the variance was approved for maximum height of 80 feet. The code allows up to 95 foot as a maximum. With the, as you go higher, you build further and further into the site with that to provide more separation. So we designed it for a maximum of 85. In reality, it'll probably closer to 60 to 65 in height. It is a four-story building, and I'll show you some elevation shortly. So the building's approximately 96 feet from the street, about 245 feet from the closest commercial to the north, 318 feet from the closest residential to the west, and 607 feet to the residential to south. The neighbors that, the neighbor to the south was at the planning commission meeting and did speak in support of the project. And I did speak with him after the hearing as well. And the couple that owns the last house in the subdivision was there as well. And they did express concerns about traffic, and had questions about how the road was going to work and all that. And I did talk to them after the hearing as well. This is a elevation of a typical Hometown Studios hotel. They have not finalized the architecture for the building, but this would be similar, if not the same, as what they would propose here. Here's another perspective. We did discuss with the planning commission that they're, we're proposing a small patio, outdoor gathering area. Obviously, that's a quiet amenity for the hotel, makes sense with COVID that we should do, that that should be provided. There will not be a pool or restaurant facilities, no amplified music or live bands or anything like that. So there's no concerns with that regard. And then here's elevation drawing, showing that it's a four-story hotel with additional architectural treatment along the top to provide that parapet to screen mechanical equipment from view and provide aesthetic interest for the building. In the packet that was provided to you, both staff, as well as myself, Avid Group, provided analysis showing how the special use request complies with the code requirements under section 3.3.2. In the interest of time, I won't go through all 11 criteria, but both the staff report and my analysis show how that's complied. And we meet all the criteria, and we asked for your approval today.
Any other questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Roth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So looking, just looking at your whole rendering and plan and all, is it really like a hotel, or it looks like you're kind of catering to like Hometown Studios, like for short-term workers?
It's, yeah, they accommodate both overnight and short, shorter, not long-term, long-term, but. But yes, people who are traveling typically, maybe, maybe a town for a week would, might use it.
That, I mean, that's, that's what I was assuming, which I think is a good business plan. Because, you know, the fact you don't have a pool and all that stuff, it's not, it's, it looks like it's geared towards kind of short-term work. You have people that are here on a consulting or something like that pop in and out.
Correct.
Okay.
Mrs. Barnaby, any questions? No? All right. All right, so?
I'm sorry, no, sir, I forgot. I had the, I had my phone on mute, so you don't hear my cat meowing at me.
Okay, all right, thank you. We just want to make sure you're still there.
Yes, presentation I thought was very complete. Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, so we'll go forward with the public hearing. I only have one agenda or comment card, and it's Michael Stevens.
Am I okay to have the mask off while I talk?
Sure. As long as you're six feet away from us.
Good morning, councilman, Mr. Mayor. My name is Michael Stevens. I'm the vice president of land for MI Homes Sarasota. I'm also the board president for Amberly Villa Owners Association for the community next door. I'm going to move quick, because I only have three minutes. We have three issues or just three concerns about this special use permit and approval being requested of the council. One, the access, it's stated in the staff report in multiple places, and even Marshall's presentation this morning, about an extension of Amberly Drive improvement east-west connector. I just want to be on the record to clarify, Amberly Drive was platted and dedicated as a private roadway to my association. And the residents in our community obviously concerned, expressed concerns about open connectivity. They bought in a gated subdivision. We always had planned and developed Amberly as a gated subdivision, privacy, access, all of that. So we just want to assert and would ask that there's maybe even clarification in the final adoption that Amberly Drive is private, okay? The second issue is the buffering and separation from the four-story hotel building. We always knew this was going to be a hotel, and we're in favor of that. We think it's a good use. However, I think the original approval by right was a two-story hotel. Now we're looking at a four-story hotel. Again, not totally an objection to that, but just want to ask or be considered when it comes in for site improvement plan and landscape plan, that additional buffering be considered in our shared property line. When Amberly had to go through its rezone and land use change to allow for the villas, we were held to a pretty high standard on the buffers for our neighborhood to adjoining residential and previously existing commercial, which was fine. It made sense to us, but just a little disappointed in the code minimum plan that showed up on the application. just a little disappointed in the code minimum plan that showed up on the application. So we'd, we'd like that to be considered. I did notice there's a pond in that 320 some odd feet, maybe a fountain, you know, would help break up the view, because I, our residents will see, obviously, a four-story building there to the east. And then the last item, not necessarily a land use or zoning matter, but we were requested by the city when we developed Amberly to install a four-inch force main extension exclusively for this property's use. And the agreement with the city utility department was, was we were going to be reimbursed for that improvement. We have no connections to that force main, we have our own connections to a private lift station, but we did extend a four-inch force main over to stub to this property. We've been working for over a year to get, you know, either the reimbursement or impact fee credits. Luckily, it's been a good market, we've sold a lot of units out there, we're very thankful for that, but the, the opportunity for impact fee credits is quickly running out as we're selling units. So I just wanted to put that out there, we would like to get that resolved sooner than later with the city. So, thank you very much.
And you do have a little bit more time, because you're working with a group, so the three minutes, if you needed something else, you could.
I practiced, so I'm good, yeah. Unless you guys have any questions for me, I mean, we always enjoy being with the city.
I guess the, the, obviously, Marshall could speak to some of it possibly, and then also the other part where the force main, that we'd have to do some research on that, I think.
Yeah, that's more for, I think, staff, I just haven't had an opportunity to speak with anyone here.
Okay, good, all right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And your card did say in favor, so.
Correct.
You know, right, so, all right. Let me just check, is there anyone else wish to speak on this before staff comes back up? Anyone else? Anyone else? So close the public hearing?
Applicant rebuttal.
Oh, applicant rebuttal, okay, is the applicant have, let's let Marshall go first, talk about some of those issues, and then we'll have the applicant rebuttal, if we need it.
I'll try not to touch anything and keep my mask on. The, the notion, the idea about the private drive, yes, without a doubt, the plat reflects that, it's, that's a legal instrument, there's nothing about this, we changed the status of Amberly Drive as a private drive. I stated that earlier. It is a potential future connection, it is a connection, it is not a right of, a free passage connection though, because it is restricted, it is owned by that community.
But there'd be a gate there where a fire can get through?
Yes, any, any gate for any private community is going to have accessibility for emergency services, without a doubt.
And, and he mentioned buffering, can we ask for buffering on the, from looking here at the property line, I think, you know, there's, looks like there's room for some trees, which, you know, if you put a tree right on the line, it blocks a four-story building?
Yeah, your code's going to require perimeter trees, a budding Amberly will need to be either a fence, a wall, or double-staggered hedge rope. So it does call for significant screening, the applicant may say they will offer something further up beyond what the minimum code requirement is. You all, in your consideration of this, can always impose an additional standard if you'd like, to provide some, for some other level of landscape requirement.
I think it'd be, since, you know, that's, that's not much of an ask, just to pop some more trees in there and make sure that they're, it's like I said, you know, the line of view, you put a short tree right next to it, it blocks a tall building. And then the last thing was, the force main, did we, we probably should check into that if we did say, I mean, if the, if they're going to now be tapping into a force main.
I do understand that that extension and stub is there, but the source of it and the funding and all that, I'm not aware of, but I'm sure somebody can, can get to the bottom of that.
We made a promise, we should look into, if we didn't, we, we didn't, but I mean, it's brought up that we were gonna, you know, future, future shared.
Jim and I will look into.
Use, that, that would just only be fair to split the cost or something.
Right, so that'll be researched and taken care of.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not aware of that, but I'm sure it can be achieved.
Okay, all right, thank you, Marshall.
I'll try not to touch either. For the record, again, Peter Pensah with Avid Group. The, the extension of Amberly Way, we designed it to meet public road standards in case there was a change in the future, but when we met with staff, and they originally explained to us the history, as Bishop Roth had explained earlier as well, the staff expressed that they wanted it to be a private road because of the fact that Amberly Way and residential is private. So we, we are currently proposing it to be a private right-of-way as well, but it's to public standards, so there's the flexibility, whichever way things may or may not go in the future with that. And I did talk with the residents afterwards. They, my understanding from staff was that the, the residents do have the ability to gate that entrance as they see fit, just like they have at their main entrance that's existing today, whether that be a code-controlled entry like you would have at most primary entrances, or even if it was a Knox box gate that would be for emergency access only. I believe either one of those would satisfy the city's criteria and would address the residents' concerns. Regarding buffering, we'll work with staff, I heard the, the comments and concerns about how landscaping can be placed, we'll work with, with staff on that as we go through the site plan process. And then the force main, we, we will be connecting to that force main. We, we would, I presume we would be required to pay impact fees, so I believe that's just a matter that someone at the city would work out with the developer.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak during the public hearing? Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and the chair will entertain a motion.
Okay, I, let's see, move to approve SU 20.4817 for special use permit hotel in SSC suburban commercial corridor, property located at 1016 64th Street Court East.
All right, any further discussion by the board, council? Hearing none, we'll start in Ward Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
All right, carries unanimously, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, Mrs. Beauchamp?
Our next item is case number SU 21.0086, Ward Two, Neighborhood 5.01, this is a public hearing. A request by Robert Schmidt, agent for Becky Ann Kern-Garbus owner, for a special use permit to operate a restaurant with over 20 seats in the UCC urban commercial corridor zoning district. The property is located at 2715 Manatee Avenue West, Bradenton, Florida 34205, at parcel number 3540700006.
All right, and I think we'll obviously repeat Mr. Rudisell's concerns with Mrs. Barnaby. Is, Mrs. Barnaby, you have all the information from the original packet?
I have all of the information from the original packet, as well as the council presentation that was emailed to me.
Okay.
And I do have that up, and it is functioning.
Okay, thank you. Marshall? Thank you.
I'm Marshall McCrory again, planning and community development. Another special use consideration, I will be brief on this one, I think this one doesn't have a lot of complexity to it. Location's 21, 2715 Manatee Avenue West. So location I think most folks are familiar with, there is existing development here. There's a, a former home that was converted to a, I'm not sure what it was originally, but it most recently was a cafe, Latte Luna, and it has been closed for a bit of time, and the request here is to reopen as a restaurant with over 20 seats. That is one of the special use kickers under the UCC zoning district, is restaurants with over 20 seats are deemed a special use because of potential adverse impacts, and are therefore subject to some additional scrutiny before allowing them to proceed. So that UCC zoning and future land use are in place for the property, and this is that property here, as mentioned, used to accommodate a coffee shop café. It, it originally was a by-right use, I believe over time it morphed and kind of got larger than 20 seats, so it, it was larger than was authorized. So this is an opportunity to legitimize through the special use process, the allowance for a restaurant with over 20 seats in this location. The site currently provides 20 parking spaces, so based on that, the maximum occupancy of the building would be 60 seats altogether. And there's a site plan showing the property kind of as currently configured. The plan is to restripe the parking lot, provide a crosswalk for safety of folks coming to the front entry through the parking lot, but otherwise maintain the property site pretty much as it is. There may be some adjustments necessary for, for waste disposal, for the dumpster pickup. And SIP is required for the project, and Public Works will ensure that the waste is handled properly there. Those same criteria again, all of which have been evaluated in the course of your staff report and you have as a part of your packet. We, we know this property is adequate to support a restaurant, because it has in the past. The area is appropriate for this type of activity, it supports the neighborhood, and is in keeping with development in the surrounding area. We think it'd be great to eliminate a vacant commercial piece of property and get some life and investment back in it, and we do find that it is, this site is adequate to accommodate the proposed use. The one thing we will point out is, it is existing. One of our requirements for special uses is that 10-foot perimeter buffer all the way around. In this case, it can't be provided on the west, on the easterly property line, excuse me, is it the west?
East.
East. I'm still in East Coast, I have a hard time shaking it. I never, I heard about the phenomenon, I've never believed it would be so bad. But anyway, they can't provide that full 10 feet. The parking's already there, without ripping it up, the 10 feet cannot be provided. It varies between two and six feet, what's actually provided there. We find that it's fine, it is adjoining another parking lot for a commercial property next door, it's not an adverse impact on anyone, so we feel that that's an acceptable reduction in the buffer. So therefore, based on these items we've addressed already, and consistency with the city's comprehensive plan, which is intended to serve moderate intensity uses for the community under the UCC future land use designation, we recommend approval. Planning commission considered it last month and recommended approval as well.
Any questions for Marshall? Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I'm so, looking at the Land Planning Associates, Inc.'s letter, says that it's a tapas restaurant with beer and wine, which I don't have any issues with, is that, is that a special use, does beer and wine just go, go with, is it not a problem, or?
Not a problem.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Open the public hearing and bring the applicant up. Open the public hearing. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have been sworn.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. For the record, my name is Robert Schmidt, I'm a certified land, land planner, AICP certified, with Land Planning Associates. My address for the business is PO Box 20115 Bradenton 34204, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall, for the presentation. I'm not going to go into too much detail, and for the benefit of Councilwoman Barnaby, I don't have anything else to add, I'll just use the, I, I do have a copy of the site plan, and if anything, if any questions came up, I was going to talk from that, but let's see if you have any questions, and in the meantime, I'll just go through a brief presentation. As Marshall stated, this is a, a business that's already, well, was previously the Latte Luna. I remember when I lived in West Bradenton years ago, this was the Old Flowers by Don site at 2715 Manatee Avenue West. The, I am here representing the prospective owners of the restaurant, and that is Ray Allen Heo and Becky Kern-Garbus, and they are here if there's any business operational questions. I'll try to answer anything, but if there's something I can't, then they're here. This special use permit is for a restaurant for more than 20 seats, as Marshall pointed out. There is only parking enough for 60 seats, and that's what we're capped at. We've got 20 parking spaces, and at three, or one space for every three seats, 60 is the maximum that we can have. Property is owned UCC, and it is in the UCC future land use category. Both of those are urban commercial corridors, so obviously the zoning is consistent with the future land use designation. There is a mix of businesses and commercial opportunities in this area, as we know. The previous user was Latte Luna, a 20-seat coffee pastry shop, which probably had more than 20 seats. Anyway, the site conditions are largely to remain the same, as Marshall pointed it out, is a positive in his staff report, that there will no longer be a vacant parcel on Manatee Avenue, it's a high-profile site, good alternative for a little tapas restaurant with wine and beer sales outside of downtown a little bit. So the, my clients are excited about the opportunity and look forward to moving forward, and because they're not developers, they've been a little bit surprised by the complexity of the process, but I've assured them that we'll, we'll make our way through it, and once we're done with this, we have to do a site improvement process, a permit, and we've talked a little bit about that too, and Marshall mentioned it. Property, the, the proposed project is consistent with the surrounding area, and I have read the staff report, concur with its findings, and we did get a positive recommendation from the planning commission. So with that, we would like to ask for your approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mrs. Barnaby, any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, continue with the public hearing, anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? All right. Marshall, I don't think there was anything in that part that you would have any reason to come back up? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we'll close the public hearing, and the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Barnaby.
At this point in time, I'd like to move for approval of the request brought forward by Bob Schmidt, agent for Becky Ann Kern-Garbus, for a special use permit to operate a restaurant located at 2715 Manatee Avenue West. It is in the urban commercial corridor, and this is a special use permit to operate a restaurant for over 20 seats.
Second? All right, Ms. Coker. All right, any further discussion? All right, if not, we'll start the vote in Ward Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
All right, carries unanimously. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Mrs. Beauchamp?
We have no new business, and we have no unfinished business on the agenda today.
Okay, so we'll go to council reports, and we'll start in Ward Five.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to reiterate how appreciative I am that the Earth Day will be taking care of the urban core on MLK from Seventh Street West to Seventh Street East, that's quite a, that's quite a feat, that is quite an area to do that, and it's great. I, last time I think we were together, mentioned that I was going to be doing my first Zoom side chat. Well, there were some extenuating circumstances, and I was unable to do it on that date, but I will be doing it on March 14th at 4:00, and I encourage everyone to tune in, and if you have any questions, please do so, and I'll be happy to address them if I can. Other than that, my phone, I turned it off, but I had my notes on there of what I was going to talk about, but things are well.
All right, thank you. Ms. Coker?
Well, I, in my council corner, I talked about that, I'm, you know, excited about the, our Earth Day thing, and I did, they are going to be doing that movie at the Manatee Performing Arts in the parking lot this Sunday. If you've got Little Winds, it's going to be Moana is going to be the, the movie that they're going to be showing, so I would encourage everyone to do that. And go to their website, they've got music in the parking lot that's going to be starting on the 19th, and it looks like they've got a nice, a nice lineup of some great, great acts, so keep an eye on their website, too.
All right, Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, I would just like to point out that as a member of the Service Club of Manatee County, we are coming up on our major fundraiser, and what the Service Club does is provide funding to approved charities that assist underserved children in Manatee County, and if anyone is interested in participating this year in our virtual fundraiser, it is free to participate, you just have to go to manateeserviceclub.com and click on it to register. We have a lot of wonderful silent auction items, which should be popping up on our website March the 13th, and as of right now, you can see the live auction items that include things such as a Charleston culinary tour, a week's day in Cabos, Mexico. culinary tour, a week's day in Cabos, Mexico, and a big screen Super Bowl party in your backyard for 20. So I would encourage everyone to please check it out, manateeserviceclub.com. We know that there are many, many of our charities that are hurting this year because of the COVID pandemic, and we would like to assist them as much as possible. In the past several years, we've given over a half a million dollars in grants and aid to children in need, and we want to keep that record going. I also would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank the council, and I would like to thank our staff, who are always simple gumby, always flexible. I, this was not my choice to have to be quarantined by any stretch of the imagination, but I, it is, it has been made easier by the staff making sure that I had what I needed and assisting me over the phone or over email whenever I had a concern. And I truly, truly appreciate everyone's help at this point in time. And that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Roth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last time we touched on Where's Creek, Ms. Coker brought up the estuary program. I saw, I had an interesting thing happen last week. You know, I was raised in Western Pennsylvania, national forest land and that state park land, a very remote area, and I see more wildlife on that creek, in that estuary, than I ever did as a child in the, in the wilds. Last week, I saw a bald eagle land on the seawall, right, right across from my house, literally, right, right next to a road. It was trying to get a little duck. He failed, but it was really wild. Pretty good-sized bald eagle, obviously migratory. About a month ago, I saw a couple of white pelicans, which normally they're, you see them, they go up and down the Mississippi River. They're, they're huge. They're about twice the size, three times the size of a normal pelican. So just, and then just the amount of wildlife that I see in that area on a, on a daily basis just blows my mind that, you know, it never as a child, when I was, you know, in the middle of the forest, did I see that much wildlife, you know, literally from my front porch in the middle of a town. It's just a very rich, very rich estuary. Moving on, Mr. Callahan, I, we've been having conversations, want to keep moving forward with, were you going to do that under department head? Or I wanted to talk about both planning director and then next step for city administrator.
Your business is fine.
Okay, well, so I know, I've looked at the resumes for the planning director. I'm hoping to move quickly on, we have, we have some excellent choices. I know that from the past, I don't want to wait too long. You lose good people. So first step, let's go with the planning director, and then I want to have an update on the city administrator slot.
Planning director, certainly, I think we're, we're ready to do interviews. We've sent you the recommendations of the A-plus, A, A-minus folks, and those were Collins' recommendations. I think if you're, if you're interested in moving it forward at this point, probably asking at least the top two candidates to be able to come in and have interviews with y'all. I think if you interview with them and don't see something you like, then certainly you can move down the list. But I think he has, he has called them and talked to them. They are ready, willing, and able to come in and interview with y'all. And I think that that would be the next step, is to have you guys meet with at least the top two candidates.
I'm prepared to do that. That, their rating is, was it on, where's the rating at?
It's on a sheet that was on a separate, the, the one I sent out a little later. You got first, and I sent one out a little later that had his ratings on him.
I didn't, yeah.
Yeah, and it ranked, it was Susan Estvez, Esteniz, and Robin.
Who were those two?
Susan Esteniz, which was pretty much always his number one person. And then Robin and I, just forgetting her last name at this point in time.
Do you want to show everyone the file we have from the?
So this is kind of what you pay for. You know, it is a unbelievably detailed report. It is Susan Esteniz and Robin Singer are the top two. What he does in this, and this is what I sent you, I made a copy of it for me in case there were questions, instead of always looking off a, a email. What it is, is he goes through all of the candidates, gives you a summary of the candidates. They show in here the background reports that were done on everybody. He does copies of all of the, they go out and request a question and answer for all of the candidates, and it's their responses to the questions and answer in here. And then they do an extensive internet search for any articles or things associated with those candidates. And it's all put in here, usually 30 or 40 pages on each candidate. He gives you a, a review of how to look at this if, if you want to, pretty much saying, look, if there's a problem with the background check, or if there was a problem with the internet search, they're not going to be in this list anyway, so you can, you can spend quite a bit less time. And I think all the candidates, the good news is, when you look at this, in, in their reference checks, it's not just a reference. It says, yes, they're great. Thank you very much. The references are pluses and minuses. You know, they go through weaknesses, and, you know, every candidate that's been working for 15 or 20 years has some things that they can do better, obviously. So I think that's why it's a great evaluation of this process, but certainly to be able to bring those folks in so that you can interview them, I think, would make sense at this point in time.
Scott, you have something?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, yes. I, I'd recommend that if, if this is something that the council wants to move forward with, that the council actually takes a formal vote on the short list and then proceed with the interviewing. Because at this point, it is a recommendation from, from your consultant.
So it would be the recommend, the motion would be to bring in the two A-plus, his top two candidates.
Right.
To interview, and obviously that doesn't pick anything, but it gives opportunity to interview them as well as, as soon as possible. And obviously, the council, as well as myself and the staff, that Carl will be involved a part of it, you know, we'll have to work within the, what day they can come in. So we'll have to really work on it. So.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to bring in the top two candidates from Colin. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say, I, I did have a third candidate that didn't make the short list, but I'm, I'm fine with moving forward. I, you know, we, we paid for a professional, you know, to help us guide through this and, you know, I, I want, I want to close this deal, so. Just wanted to make that comment.
All right. Any other comment or discussion? All right, we'll start, start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Mr. Roth, the administrator now?
Yeah, so time is of an essence. Moving quickly on the city administrator slot, we got an email with a timeline. So it's, that's acceptable, only a little too long.
And I, I would like, that's one of the parts I was going to bring up in my comments, too. I'd like to be able to have that person, if it can be, in place a little sooner, so Mr. Callahan can at least give some of the institutional knowledge. Because, you know, I mean, you think about it, if we did the, the timeline that's there, I know it's aggressive, but it's going to be up to us as a council and mayor's office to be on it. And if all of a sudden they start July 4th, and Carl's already gone, it's going to be difficult because obviously with Carl's retirement, he has to be gone June 30th with the F R S situation. So that's my two cents. I think if we can ask Colin to move it up a little bit, I would be for that, if it's within reason, but also it's on us to be on it.
Right. I think that's the key, is he puts guidelines in here with latitudes between times. The first thing he's going to start doing is calling you to get your feedback again as to what you're looking for in an ideal candidate. Same thing from an H R standpoint, make sure we have the information, job description, things like that out there. So I think that incumbent upon us to kind of try to, if we're wanting to expedite it, make sure we're as responsive as we can be to Colin, getting back to him, even not maybe waiting around for him to call. If you see that he calls and leaves a message, try to get back and, and give him, realizing 15, 20, 30 minutes of, of your input, so that we can get this moving forward. I think this is, it's, I mean, I think it can be expedited, like before. We thought maybe we would be in the position we're in, 14th, 15th, maybe 20th of the month. It got, the stuff came in pretty quickly once we got to this stage, so I think we can, we can push it for y'all. But just be responsive. We'll be responsive from a staff standpoint, but you guys, from your perspective.
I'm completely available.
Phone's always on.
Right, so.
Colin, no, unfortunately, Colin doesn't only work just for us, so.
I understand.
Yeah, he's, he's a busy guy, and, and he's, he's good, but sometimes it's right at the end of the day, he's calling back, you know, so.
He didn't have any issues with us on the planning director, did he, when he called?
No, no, he didn't.
Getting back to a timeline?
He was fine. Everything was good. I just want to make sure we keep that in order.
Right.
Yeah.
So need a motion on that to ask him to approve, but again, to kind of speed up the schedule?
I'm asking for an expedited schedule.
Schedule, and then we can, all right.
I mean, we've already, you approved him moving forward. We already have an executed agreement with him, so now we're just trying to get the schedule tightened up.
Tighten the schedule. Okay, all right. All right, anything else, Mr. Roth?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, Mr. Sanders?
The good or the bad?
Whatever you want first.
The bad first, because we always like to end on a good note, right? The bad. Ironic that we have three pages, our agenda, we have three pages of disclosure, and only two pages of work product. I think maybe your attorney had something to do with that. I don't know. Maybe not. The good, I just got a text that I can get my vaccination.
Yay.
It's now been over two months, and so I'm pretty happy. I may just get out of here and call them back and say, shoot me. That's all I have.
All right, and on that, I know, obviously, a lot of the citizens out there are still trying to get vaccinations and working through things. Some of the information that we get in the mayor's office through the county and, and obviously look through the state, is that hopefully, if everything goes well, everybody over 65 that wants one will have it sometime in this month, hopefully sooner than later. We have been getting a lot more volume in our town, which is good, because that's probably the most emails I've got since I became mayor about what's going on. And I think the county has worked through some of the difficulties. And then hopefully, by sometime towards the end of May and June, with the volume ramping up of vaccinations, we'll be able to have everybody that wants one to have one, if everything stays equal. So that's the goal for our town, and that's going to be, you know, and that, again, through the county, health department, and the state, it's looking good for the citizens. And again, I'm going to make a statement that I think that, you know, there's a lot of people out there that does their own research and want it, but if, if you have an opportunity, really do your own research and find out. But, you know, I think it's good for our community if, if you get the shot, and that's something that's, that's a personal opinion, but just, you know, make your decision, but really look at it strong, because it's going to protect everyone. All right, a couple of things I have, and it's going to be, we have three Wednesdays in this month, so that could be workshops, two that are council meetings. So I'm asking, and I'm kind of pushing that we've asked the staff to do a lot in the last several workshops, so maybe we take off next Wednesday of a workshop, let them compile the information, and then come back at the, I think it's the 31st, and have the workshop and bring back a lot of the information. I think, Mr. Sanders, for you, it'd be on some sidewalks and some other things we've brought up. Mr. Cal, I've asked Mr. Callahan, obviously, through the council and us, to have some sort of five-year layout of some of the sales tax money, to show us what a plan might be with some capital expenses. But give, that'll give them a time.
Right.
To bring more information back for us, so.
I'm glad you said that, because I'd like to see a plan from Public Works on every, you know, stormwater.
Mm-hmm.
Infrastructure with the water, stormwater, paving, sidewalks. If, if, in fact, and I know, I probably shouldn't even mention this, because it would probably jinx it, but in, in fact, if, if we get an infrastructure funding through the federal government, and it trickles down to the city, and if we already have our infrastructure plan in place, we can be first in line to present. Again, hopefully I didn't jinx this by saying that, but if we're ahead of the game and said, we've already got a plan, we can do it all, or we can do it in stages. Here it is, and jump in line first if there's an infrastructure bill passed in indication that there is, but we've heard that for, what, 20 years. I, I think we need to have our plan anyway, you know, complete plan of what it would take to do everything, or a five, 10, 15-year plan.
Right, and that is something else I was going to bring up, we, we all met with Vern Buchanan that wanted to.
Right.
And it's something that, right, wrong, or indifferent, on your political beliefs, there's probably going to be some money that will get down to us, and if we're shovel-ready, we may have an opportunity. So I know Jim's been working on some of that.
Exactly what I was trying to say. If we're shovel-ready, we'll be ahead of everybody else, because some, I don't know that anybody's got a plan like that. Maybe they do, but I'd like for us to have one, so that we can say, here, we've already been working on this. Here it is.
Okay, so no workshop next Wednesday, and they'll bring it back on the 31st. So, all right. And then also, just to kind of bring up our Pirates in Town, and I know most everybody's been to a game, or tried to, or will get to one on the council, and bringing friends and neighbors. As Mr. Callahan and I have talked, it looks a little funny being at capacity, at only maybe 2,500, but it's still 2,000. But, but it's fun to see people out there, and it's been some good games, and maybe one rain game. But if you have an opportunity, and if you can get a ticket, get out there and see them, and Pirates are, are, bring a lot to our town, and let's keep it going. So that's all I have. Start with department heads.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Ms. Barnaby.
I sincerely apologize. I'm sitting at my kitchen table, and I have my agenda packet spread all the way across with my iPad open and my cell phone going, and I neglected to bring up the one thing that we talked about at the workshop that I said I would bring forward today to provide information to the council, and I, I sincerely apologize.
Oh, no problem. Go ahead.
At the workshop, we discussed, as we have both at two workshops and in a regular council meeting, the possibility of selecting a lobbyist or a lobbying firm to represent the city's concerns during this special session that is happening up in Tallahassee. It's not, it's, it's their regular legislative session, but it's happening under special conditions, meaning there are really no members of the public allowed to participate in the committee meetings or be at the Capitol Building because of COVID. We've talked about this, Ms. Coker brought it forward. I said that I would speak with some of the lobbying groups that I had spoken with before. Everyone is in session now up there, and some of them are not calling people back. I did hear from Ballard Partners, which is one of the groups that you received the information on several weeks ago. They are the group that said that they would be willing to do a one-year contract, which would incorporate the dates for next year's session. So we would basically be getting two sessions for the price of one. They have done several, or they represent several cities, and what we could do is piggyback on one of the contracts that has already been through public purview. And I think, Mrs. Coker, if, this was, this was your idea and what you wanted to bring forward, I, I think what we could do is authorize our city administrator and the mayor to enter in negotiations with Ballard Partners, with the understanding that it would, our, your contract would be around $60,000, and that should, because of COVID or any other unusual circumstances, that next year's legislative session goes beyond the middle of March, they are willing to enter in a month-to-month with us after the first year. So, Mrs. Coker, this was, this was your baby, and I, I think you ought to bring it home, if you are in agreement to make the motion to authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into negotiations, and to authorize the mayor to be able to finalize that contract.
Well, I, I completely agree. I, I have tried to make a few phone calls, but have had a little bit of a difficult finding. And as far as Ballard Partners, I, I mean, they come, I think, with a, a good reputation. And so, yeah, I mean, I'll make that motion if, if it's of everyone's pleasure to authorize the mayor to.
So motion, let's get, let's get a motion in a second, if there is one, and then we'll. So motion, let's get, let's get a motion in a second, if there is one, and then we'll go to discussion.
I'll, I'll second it, Mr. Mayor, and I'll read my notes again, if that would be of help to both Mrs. Coker and to the clerk that's trying to get motions down for the minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you.
It is to authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into negotiations with Ballard Partners to be able to piggyback on an accepted public contract in the $60,000 range, and for those negotiations to include a stipulation that if the 2022 legislative session goes beyond its expected date, that we would be able to enter into a month-to-month with Ballard Partners to get us through that session.
Mr. Rudesell, is there anything, is that okay?
Well, and I'm sorry, and to authorize the mayor to execute that contract.
The, so the month-to-month, $60,000 range, so the month-to-month is divided by 112, and a $60,000 range, what's that mean, 61 or 69?
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I basically said 60,000. So if the council is comfortable, if the mayor can, can negotiate and wrestle them down to 59,000, that's great, or if he has to go to 61, that's great. I, I don't, to me, 60,000 means closer to 60,000 than 70,000.
That's, that's what I want to say.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second, any discussion? And let me ask, let me go to the attorney first, is there anything you see?
The only thing I would note, and I understand we have, we have timing issues here. Generally, it is my great preference to bring a contract back and have it approved by the council, rather than putting out terms and then having it finalized by the mayor and the, and the attorney. So that would be my, my recommendation would be to bring back a contract for consideration by the council, unless the council determines that there is a timing exigency here, that it needs to be done this way.
Is two weeks, in my opinion, is two weeks going to make a difference? If we, we'll negotiate it, get it to us, bring it back as quick as possible, and then finalize it in two weeks?
My opinion is we don't need to have, we just don't need to be rushed through. And I, I think we're, we're getting the cart before the horse. If we want a lobbyist for us, it needs to be done with some proper vetting, some presentations, and contracts before us, before we, you know, start negotiating with only one firm, that I, I just don't think that's transparent. So I'd, I'd be in objection to the way we're handling this, and I think if we're going to do it, we need to do it probably this summer and have something done by July, August, September, somewhere in there.
Any other?
Mr. Mayor?
Comment? Yes, ma'am.
As you know, the legislative session has already begun. That is the only reason I brought it forward in this fashion. I, I'm not opposed to waiting two weeks to have the, an actual contract in front of the council to vote up or down, but two weeks in Tallahassee can be an eternity.
And I would say that I have done a little preliminary reaching out and happened on the lobbyists for VRBO, so, and Airbnb, so they're out there being represented, and if we want to be part of that conversation, I, I think we need someone representing us up there, and not just on that issue, on various other issues.
If I may.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that's one of the issues we would like to have a lobbyist, but give me an idea of what else, I mean, give me maybe two more for right now.
Well, if there's an opportunity to get funds for stormwater management, or stopping any unfunded mandates, I mean, it could be so many things.
And I think one of the benefits, you know, and I, I don't disagree with everything that's been said as far as timing, but I think one of the benefits is we are actually in a process where we get a little bit now, and we come out strong for next year, and it's not another negotiation. And again, if we don't like them, or they don't feel like it's worth it, we can pull back and do it. But, but obviously, we've moved forward. I think this has been out there quite a bit, so, you know, some of the transparency, we've been talking about this for several weeks now, we've had it at, at meetings and workshops. So if there, if there any more discussion, or we have a motion in a second? Yes, sir.
So I, I brought this up, I was Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council on Monday, and we have, one of the, we have the, the long-term lobbyist for regional planning councils was on, on video Zoom, and then the, the attorney that I've known up there for, he's been representing him for about 20-some years, well-known, Don Kahn, I talked to him about this, and the what we're doing and how we're doing, and, I mean, his rec, and I'm, I'm fine with moving forward, because I think we should have done this before, but his recommendation to, to, to kind of tie him off of something Mr. Sanders said, he said that you're moving quickly right now on this, and that his recommendation would be that you continue having the discussion, hire someone, you know, over, over the summer, you know, hire someone, get, and go for requests for proposals, which we haven't done, and then have them ready and working by fall, you know, and that, and then you're set up for next year. My one question on this, and, and I don't mind, you know, because I think we could have, probably should have, something we should have done years ago, but haven't, moving forward, if we're going to move forward, my question is, having read all the, the reports coming out of Tallahassee, that, you know, right now, for a state that's open for business, they're not open for business. The Tallahassee is closed down, you can't get in there, no one can get in there. So are we hiring a lobbyist to the point where they can't crash the halls and do their work done? Because that's, that's what they do, they're in there constantly, and I'm just not sure that this year, you know, what kind of access they're going to have. So that would be a question, if we're going to move forward, what kind of access are they going to have when no one's allowed in the building unless your staff or, or a legislator? I don't want to be paying someone to do nothing.
And that's a question I, if it goes forward, I will definitely approach that and bring it back. I, I personally think we should be and go to two weeks, bring back exactly what's available, and then the council can yea or nay on that, so.
I would be fine with amending my motion to that.
To negotiate and bring it back.
Bring it back in two weeks.
Second agrees.
Again, I'm opposed to it, I think we're rushing this, and anytime we rush something, it's not good. I don't think we've vetted it, I don't think we've discussed what we, what we expect. You know, the, the things that's been mentioned are already being addressed by the Florida League of Cities and others, and I just don't think we'll get our, I think it's a, at this point, unless we know exactly what we want, I think it'd be a waste of our money. So I'm opposed to it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yeah.
Three.
To be clear, this is a motion to continue the discussion in two weeks.
So come back with a contract next week.
Come back with a contract, yeah.
Okay, all right, yes.
All right, four.
No.
Five.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries four to one, and we'll bring it back at the next council meeting with the contractor, try to get that stuff out early as we can.
I, I think one thing we'll want to do, Mr. Brown, is when we negotiate with the lobbyist, find out if any issues have been resolved.
Right.
At the legislative level, so if there's something that you're interested in thinking is very important to know, was it, has it been addressed and gone through legislature already?
Done.
Or at what level are some of these things that were VRBOs, home rules, what level are those at now? Are they still in committee reports, or they've been voted on? What's the status? Because, I mean, if things have already been voted on and, and moved along.
It's not agreeing to do it yet, it's just agreeing to negotiate and bring it back.
But I mean, I think you're going to want to know what the status of the things is that we are showing are important before you just sign on automatically.
And to, so to address Ms. Couchman's question, what can they do for us this year? What, 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 what issues are out there? Because otherwise, I mean, if it's not much, you know, we can wait. I mean, so they need to come up with some, you know, why, why should I hire you halfway through session? And they better have a damn good answer.
I'm sure they will.
All right, perfect. All right, thank you, Ms. Barnaby. Anything else from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and council, thank you very much. I, again, apologize for not being ready when it was my turn.
Oh, no problem.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to department heads. Chief?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things, would like to send our condolences out to the family of Ray Lucas. Ray worked there before me, he was, I guess he retired out as, as an assistant chief back in around 87, and went on to West Manatee to become their fire chief, but, yeah, I think he put in like 27 years with the city, so, yeah. The funeral will be at Shannon's Funeral Home this weekend, Friday will be the visitation, and Saturday will be the funeral. So again, our condolences go out to his family. I mean, you had mentioned too about the COVID, I just wanted to update you that we're doing real good about getting our folks vaccinated. We're, we're probably around 50% of all these, all the, all the guys and gals, and pretty good. I got something the, the other day emailed to me that we were ranked like within the top 10 within the state of Florida for fire, fire departments our size. So that's a good thing, we're doing our job. Just a quick update to on the construction out of Station 3. Pad's been poured, everything's going real well, the walls are starting to go up, so you'll start seeing a fire station coming up out of the ground here pretty quick. All right, that's all.
On that, can you, can you get with the contractor, I know Jim does a weekly report with them, can you get a contractor updated as to timelines, a little more specific timeline when they think?
I can get them.
Okay.
Thank you. Jim?
Just real quick to, to let you know, we have as part of the Capitol Plan for this year, there's four additional units of the air conditioning system here at City Center that are being replaced. Work on that is going to start a week from Monday. There are four units that are being replaced, the first of which is the outside air handling unit that services this room. So we'll get that out of the way, and then the next unit after that is all council chambers areas. So once they're here on, starting on the 22nd, they'll stay until all four are in place. The first unit, equipment-wise, is already here, and the other three are in transit, so I apologize in advance for any inconvenience it may cause.
So we have a council meeting two weeks from today, if they started on the Monday before, will they be ready for Wednesday morning's meeting?
I'll, I can get some additional information, I just got the schedule this morning, so I'll follow up with you.
Yeah, so, all right, so, yeah, we, we don't mind sweating a little bit, but if it's a long meeting, it could be tough. All right, thank you. All right, thank you. All right? Chief?
Thank you. COVID update for us, as you know, the, we haven't really had the access in law enforcement, it was just opened up to my folks 50 and above last Wednesday, and that brought, almost everybody who was eligible went, and so that brings us to 10%. We are hoping and praying that we can get our folks in there when that gets extended a little bit, I think it's pretty important. Good news, remember I always say I come with good news? You'll recall last year, we gave some forfeiture funding of $600 to Boys and Girls Club of Manatee County for a program at Rogers Elementary. I went to the graduation of that program last weekend, it's called the SMART Program, and it really just encourages some of the young kids in academics and behavior and showing up, and it was a great success, they did it almost all via Zoom, that's always kind of sketchy with elementary school kids, but when they were tested during our participation, they all did exceptionally well. So it's always nice to see the fruits of our forfeiture funds, that it's really making a difference out in the community. One of the things I wanted to bring to your attention, you may have heard about it, it's a kind of under the whole one-city-one-team mantra, we are doing a Polish the Park community-wide event, I know Jim McClellan and his folks are intimately involved, the CRA is spearheading that as well, along with us. We have participation from Realized Branton Manatee High School, and of course us, we're expecting upwards of 100 volunteers out there in the Riverwalk area to do things such as pick up trash, do some painting, just a variety of things, replenish the sand, all while adhering to social distancing, so we're, we're going to be kind of spread out. It's going to be on April 3rd. I have the flyer, but I believe your CRA manager is going to send this to you electronically so we didn't kill some stuff, but we're, we're putting this stuff up. We think it's going to be a great event, just trying to get out there and be visible with our community service. And so, and as well, we're, we're also this week doing some beautification of our outdoor lobby. On Friday, we're going to be planting some more plants, so if you all want to roll up your sleeves and put some gloves on, feel free to come on out, it's sunflower season, you can plant those right now. Other than that, I have nothing, anybody have any questions? All good? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Sharon?
I just wanted to mention that at 2:00 today, I'll be riding along with Sergeant Serniglia. We're going to look at his signage request that he brought up at the last CRA meeting, we're going to go ahead, and then I'll work with Jim, and, and we'll make any adjustments that may be necessary.
Thank you. Scott?
I don't have anything, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Callahan?
Just one thing, if we can indulge for just a second, since we have METV here, if for some reason you don't have air, there are ways we can keep it a little cooler on y'all, and, and if you don't mind, I can come play with the lights and make sure that they still work for METV. Things that create the most heat are those lights right behind you.
Those really heat up your area, and if you guys don't mind, we'll take a look and see if we break the lighting down overall, does it still work? And it would be an effort to, I've always done this for 20 years, I'm still not sure which light works the most.
Well, it might not be as hot up here now that gallows out in the crowds.
Right. Oh. Did he, did he hear that?
I think I filled those shoes a little bit, though.
See, these are the ones right here that create the heat.
Yeah.
Have a little candlelight over there for you guys.
What does it do?
Isn't it on the dark side for the cameras?
Okay. Does it work if we take these down? Those are the ones that pretty much got to stay, aren't they?
And we'll, we'll make it work.
Okay, well, we figured out, I was just curious if there was any way that, that what we were seeing would, would allow us to bring any of that down, because that's what heats everything up is on the lights.
Generally, we don't have that many people in here.
If, if it's, if it's something really bad, we might have to switch to auditorium if it's possible, but Jim will take care of it.
Well, I just wanted to indulge, see if it was going to make it, but I was afraid those lights going down would create a problem.
Too much, okay.
That's what's hot for y'all.
All right, we'll process through it as we go. All right, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, well, thank you for a great meeting, and anything else for the good of the order by anybody? All right, we'll be adjourned, thank you.